Twenty-nine.
All right, so if you have a form, you can go ahead and start our study session at 6:30 PM. You can stand before the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can take a little help for us, please.
Councilwoman Villanueva.
Present.
Reed.
Present.
Jackson.
Here.
Waller. And there's that.
Here.
A reminder, if we turn the lights on, they're not already on. All right, so we are here to discuss the items that are currently on our agenda. So I will go ahead and just go down through them, and if any questions come up, this is the time for us to discuss. So our first item would be our approved resolution 2022-21 to declare precinct five seat vacant. Do you have any questions in regards to that topic?
I guess I have a question. What is our timeline?
Sixty days.
Sixty days, correct.
From today, yep.
Any other questions? In regards to our communications plan.
So on our communications plan, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What I was looking at when we're talking about this communication plans, also they're looking for us to approve the information that was in the back part is the press release, basically whenever they want to change or add, we're giving them that approval if we do approve.
Yep, so if it's approved, those are just templates that have been provided that we go off of. So if my office were to release a press release, I could use that outline and insert the information that needed to be shared through that. But this was created back in 2019 when the community was a project through Project Rising Tide. However, with the transition within the city manager's office, it never came before council for formal approval. So during the regular session, her name is Ms. Borgstrom, who worked to develop this communications plan, she'll share the process, how she came up with the information, and then it will come before council for formal approval so that we can start utilizing the information that's included in there.
That's always a good idea to have that template in it, but you know how sometimes it can be vague and somebody adds some things in it, but as I hear what she has to say, maybe it will help you go forward with that.
Any else have questions on our communication plan? All right. Any questions on the additional professional engineering service fee? Mayor Protam Jackson?
Yes. Haley, just give me some of the, what's some of the abbreviations. I do know what the TIP is on the first page, I'm sorry, all the way back, White Men's Associates.
The actual proposal. Yeah, so this is, it's been shared at several meetings now that we were awarded an additional $375,000 in federal funds to go towards the Haven Road project, which will now extend that project to include River Street. So with that, the engineer firm, White Men's Associates, they had to include the scope of work that will go for that project, so they're just providing us with an update of proposal to complete that engineering work.
So I just, I cleared, thank you for that information, I understand that portion. I was just asking also, can you give me some of the abbreviations? I do know under section two, I understand what the TIP is, and then what is the NEPA? I tried to look for it before I asked it myself.
In all honesty, I'm not quite sure what that is, but it's just probably more than likely different requirements that the state requires. I know for the shipboat, that is Historical Preservation Office of the State of Michigan. But I can't get exact.
Yeah, I just found curious when it came like a mess, but it's 24,000.
More than likely, if there's a cost for those supplemental, they will come back to our council so that you would be provided with that.
Okay.
With that additional information.
And so the rest of that funding, I understand, is supposed to be federal funds?
Yes, they're all federal dollars.
So basically, we are investing $24,000 to receive the $375,000, is that correct?
That is correct.
Was that considered matching for him?
No, that's just the cost for the engineering services to design that part of the project.
Gotcha.
So since we are getting more money to extend the road improvements, that $24,000 is going towards the White Men's part of that traffic plan. I'm correct?
Correct. And you all approved the initial engineering service request back end of December, early July of, I mean, early January of this year. So this is just amending that proposal to include the additional work to extend it to River Street.
Do we have any other questions about this? Questions on our sewer easement title work?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so what exactly is the easement? Is that from the road to the house? Is that considered the easement?
So this involves actually a lot of different things. So basically, the way an easement, easement just by way of reference is permission to enter and use someone's property that we don't own. So it could be the section between the street and the sidewalk, and easement could go through the main part of someone's property. So that's what easement could be, but there are 215 different parcels in the city that not all of them are going to have easements. They may be owned by the city, they may be owned completely by other entities. If they're owned by other entities, then we would need an easement through them. And we may have some of those easements, but some of them are so old, we just don't know.
And this is required through the USDA wastewater treatment plant project that we have currently going on. This is just a requirement of that program that we have to identify all of the easements for those 215 parcels. We did release an RFP back in March, however, we did not receive any formal bids to provide that service. So Attorney Harkness, he did reach out to Devon Title because this work, per the USDA, it falls on the attorney's.
Yeah, so what it is is.
Scope to be completed.
As part of the USDA grant, the city attorney has to sign off that we have valid easements and that we own the properties that are titled in the city's name. And in order to do that, I mean, obviously, you know, there's absolutely no way we would know unless we actually go and do the title work. So what I told the manager is, we've got to pull title work on all these, and once we have the title work, we're going to have to keep it somewhere safe so that this issue doesn't come up again in the future. But when those, when that sewer infrastructure was installed, I'm not going to know how many years ago, I mean, some of that stuff's got to be.
A long term.
Fifty, more than 50 years old. There should, knock on wood, should be easements on the books for those, but if there aren't, we're going to have to get easements from the property owners, which is going to be a whole nother issue.
Okay, so quick question. The easements, well, the parcels in question, they're partially residential, people own them, we just didn't get anything back from them, and then some of them the city and land bank?
So there's a combination of, some of them, we believe are, well, we know they're city-owned parcels, there's a handful of commercial parcels, a lot of them are residential parcels. So the sewer project through USDA is going to have, it's going to affect all of those 215 parcels. And as part of that project, we've got to sign off saying, they basically, we as a city either have an easement or we outright own the property so that USDA will give us the money to go and do the work there. So it's not a matter of them saying, hey, yeah, there's an easement, it's we need to see the actual recorded easement or the, you know, to know that that exists, otherwise we're going to have to go and negotiate with the property owners and say, hey, we need an easement to your property.
Okay.
And we don't want, you can't get through the grant process until we have that because otherwise we'll be kind of put in a carper for the horse.
Gotcha.
And this is a reimbursable expense, so however much we pay Devon Title to complete this work, we will be able to recover that cost through the loan, through USDA. So we have to expend the funds to get the service completed, but then we will be reimbursed through the USDA.
Do we have any other questions in regards to this item? All right. Questions on our enterprise fleet program for the second round purchases? Yes, Mayor Protam Jackson?
Yes, I was curious how we were selling the trucks.
We would sell them back through Enterprise, so Enterprise would help us sell them. Director Miller has gotten estimated costs based off the market, we could, we have an estimated sale price of $55,000 per truck resulting in a $15,000 to $20,000 profit for each of those five vehicles. We're not looking to sell the first round until next year because they are a 24-month lease, so we are in the second year of that, of the first year of the enterprise program. It has turned out to be a great program for the community, excuse me, the city to take advantage of. And so this is just getting your approval so that we can purchase the next round of vehicles for the DPW.
So you only sell them through Enterprise?
Yes.
Anyone else? That was my, thank you.
Yep, they will manage that part for us.
Any other questions in regards to the fleet vehicles? Questions on the purchase of the backhoe? Yes, Councilwoman Reed.
Okay. I was reading there where it said that we had a backhoe that we had received from the Army, but that's not usable and says new.
The one from the Army, at least if I can recall when that happened, those were used vehicles that were, that we were able to gain through auction?
So I saw in here.
That I could be the bulldozer.
No, that is correct, and Director Miller will be able to speak. I believe there, it's not utilized as much as we thought it would be, so we are looking to trade that in to purchase a bigger backhoe. This is our, I've learned is our most used piece of equipment in the DPW, it's used by our streets, cemetery, water, and sewer. I mean, right now, we just, ours is very old, so they're looking to upgrade that piece of equipment.
Okay, I see these other things that can be attached now, where it says bucket. Does that mean it's one of those that has the bucket that go up?
No, that's a bucket truck, no. That is something different. And I would have Director Miller, he would be able to explain the different features that are being included in on this piece of equipment. But I believe it's a bucket that when they go to scoop things to pick it up, that's what the bucket is on this piece of equipment.
Okay. I guess several times I have talked with, you know, the guys, including Patrick that works with DPW, and they're always talking about they need a lift, a truck, the truck that's got the lift on it where you can go up and trim trees or hang things high and stuff like that. Where are we going to apply for one of those?
That's what we're working on, so we're working to build our equipment pool fund, that's the fund that we utilize to buy equipment for the DPW. Similar with the sale of the next round of enterprise fleet trucks, if we're looking to bring in $15,000 to $20,000 of profit, that will go into that equipment pool fund to not only purchase new fleet vehicles, but also help us to purchase other vehicles or other pieces of equipment for DPW. However, we need to really replace our current backhoe because like I said, that's the most used piece of equipment right now by all of our departments in the DPW, and it's not, it's not doing what it needs to be done. It's not doing the best that it could be doing, so they're looking to replace that as well as build up our equipment pool so that we can purchase different new pieces of, additional pieces of equipment.
Okay.
And we're also updating our capital improvements plan in that we will identify other pieces of equipment, like a bucket truck, like our fire truck, and then start working on identifying levels of funding to afford with that purchase.
So who decides the necessity of what should happen when?
The directors over the departments.
Any other questions? Any questions in regards to city manager contract addendum? Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
I got a couple of questions. Okay, so annually, the city manager receives 240 hours of paid leave time? Is that what it is?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, is there currently a clause as far as how much time you can roll over?
Yeah.
Eighty hours? Okay. And. Let me see, are we inside? So with this, are you asking to roll over 29 plus 74?
No, so I'm looking just to request to carry over the additional 74 hours just for this current year, and there'll just be a one-time rollover.
Okay, yeah, so that'd be inside the 80 hours. She's in, so you'd be inside the 80 hours?
No, 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 it's, it's an additional 74 hours in addition to the 80 that roll over, so it's 74 hours just for the 20 to 23-year in addition to the 80 that I would roll over. So it's a total of 154 just for the 2020, I'm sorry, just from the 22 to 23-year.
Yes, 154.
Yep.
Yes. Councilwoman Miller?
Yes, so did we roll over some hours for you from being interim city manager?
I had just the hours that were available at that time, and then they were used, my admin time, it had been used by December 31 of last year.
And we did, you did use them?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on this topic? Yep, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. The other question is just, you said with 154, so you're not able to use any of those hours this year?
No, well, I have to use them by my anniversary dates, which is June 4th, so it's roughly over nine hours with me getting ready to go off on maternity leave.
Nine days, not nine.
Nine, nine, nine hours, nine days, I'm sorry, a little over nine days plus a few odd hours. With me getting ready to go off on maternity leave, I've not had the opportunity to take, utilize my vacation time as I normally would. I'm trying to spend as much time here with my staff, we have a lot going on with the proposed road mileage as well as water rate study, starting the budget process early and as well as bringing a new assistant into my office, trying to dedicate my time here in office to make sure my staff is fully prepared for when I do go off on extended leave. Thank you.
Any questions on us approving the employee appreciation picnic? Yes, Mayor Protam Jackson?
The only question I have was that with this date, is it allocated, are you asking all of them to be there? Is it, they have an option if they want to be there, if they don't want to be there, you're asking them all to be?
Yes, we, this is invited, all city employees are invited as well as city council, we've done this for years in the past, before COVID, we would close down half a day on Friday. Ms. Reed has, or Councilmember Reed has graciously helped us plan and provide that picnic for all city employees. We do this as well as during Christmas when we have the holiday Christmas party. So this is just a way to show our staff and council members just a little appreciation, we would shut city hall down at noon so that they could attend this picnic event. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, I don't know if it would be more appropriate for Ms. Reed or Haley, but our office would like to go into support. So if that's her number, just tell me if you guys need.
Yep, Councilmember Reed is working to put that menu together, and then she's been providing the petition to me as well, so we can let her know what we. So she is working that.
Right, any other questions, comments? And then the rest are discussion items. Do you want to cover those two, the other discussion items?
They're all, it's all.
We have nine minutes left, and you do have to still be public comment.
So in regards to the following discussion items, ARPA funds, boards and commissions, and the procedures for the board and commissions. Do we have any questions on those?
Which one are you on now?
The last three that are on the agenda. Those are discussion items. But I just wanted to see if anybody wanted any clarification on these.
I would like a little clarification on the new board and commission term limits.
What's your question?
What was the? Why is it being discussed, basically?
Allow our attorney.
So Councilwoman Lanu had inquired as to why, so she was appointed to the Equity Task Force, and she was inquiring as to why her term only had six months on it, and it's because the board was set up a year and a half ago. And so the terms start, started when the board started, and because, you know, she hadn't applied until 18 months in, there were only six months left in the term, and so that was the answer to the question, is terms run from when the terms start, not from when somebody's appointed, and that's how all of the boards and commissions in the city currently operate. And my understanding is that she's requesting that the council revise that and basically have the city create boards operate from the day of appointment, which I don't know that that, I don't know that it makes sense to deviate those three boards when all of our other boards and commissions operate in the same fashion, so.
So very similar to how we have staggered, that's the same sentiment for the board and commission, so that not everybody's exiting at the same time.
I get it.
You have some continuity.
I get it.
But I will say that the board that was created, the advisory board that was created for Equity Task Force, does not have staggered terms. So what might make more sense, if the council's interested in maintaining that continuity, is setting it up so that when the terms expire later this year, that there's a set of terms that start out at, say, one and two years, you know, just split them down the middle, say, three of them shall be for a year, and then the other balance out for two, and then the renewing terms thereafter are two years, that way you'll have openings every year, every other year too.
I like that better.
That would make more sense then, because you're going to, because trying to do it from the date of appointment doesn't solve the problem. That would, because hypothetically, if you have three people appointed on the same day, you're going to have three people come off at the same time. So.
That's what I was going to ask you right there.
Yep.
All right, any other questions on this topic? All right, so being conscientious of our time, we still need time for public comments. Do we have anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and speak? If you would just like to state your name and your address, and you have three minutes?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Whitney Ordell, I'm the director of housing initiatives for Neighborhoods Incorporated. I just wanted to attend your meeting tonight to commit and talk about some of the work that we're doing here at Alvin. As the HARA, which is our Housing Assessment Resource Agency for Calvin County, we are bringing more housing services for lack of housing and homelessness prevention, so we are looking forward to doing a lot of work with your community. I understand that in the past, prior to Neighborhoods Incorporated taking over this department, that there has been a lack of resources that's been brought to your community, and I'm here and want to kind of mend those wounds and do all that we can to provide those resources to the good people here at Alvin. I see that you guys have a flyer here about the Marshall Alvin Connector for bus passes. We do have two, our case managers that are in Alvin every Monday and Tuesday over at the Cran Building, they're typically there from 9:00 until 4:00 PM, 4:30 in the day, and we are giving a bus passes to the working class, and I just wanted to also refer to our newsletters and some of our fires, if you have any difficulty, so they can contact us if they're going to need help.
So are you here this evening for Mr. Puckerin?
Yes.
Okay, so you are on the agenda for our official council meeting to give a presentation.
So that's not it until seven?
We'll have you right back up.
Yeah, we have you right back up. So all that lovely stuff you have will.
Okay.
Yep, so do you, if you have the agenda, you can see where you're on listed for the presentations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else here? I was going to say, do we have anybody on?
Did you already talk about the ARPA funds?
We did, we did ask if there was any. We did, we did ask if there was any.
I guess I was going through some things. I see the water fountains out here. Are they available, available to be put up in parks also?
Yes, I believe we purchased some for the parks as well.
Okay. When, when will those, will they replace this summer?
They, yes, they have to order additional parts, they require additional parts that we did not have, so they're working to get those in, and then they will start making rounds to, to install them, just working them into the water department schedule. Right now, I know they are very busy with the hydro flushing that's getting ready to start, as well as they've seen a significant increase in NISTIG requests that they have to respond to as well. But that is, they are set to get those installed in the hard spaces.
Do we have anybody on this? Okay. So do we have any other questions in regards to our agenda items before we go?
I would just say, when we adjourn, we might want to wait until we get our type issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're going to have to come, see what's going on with these.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Sorry.
We click to make up?
Councilwoman Villanueva?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
And your staff?
Yes. Study session closed, 6:50, 8:00 PM, quick break.